Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Rika City Council meeting. This is May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. This is the closed session meeting starting at four five thirty four P. M. Public comment. Looks like there's no public comment this time. We will close public comment and we will go into closed session. Meeting adjourned? Or that portion. Right? All right. So there is no reportable action on the closed session special meeting and be adjourned at six oh four. To the Rika City Council meeting for May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. Please join us in the pledge allegiance. All right. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to remind everybody in the audience to please silence their cell phones at this time for no interruptions, including our council. All right. Um, so before we get started tonight, it's been brought to my attention and after review of our packet and applications for this evening from council members and then myself are reviewing. It's it's in question that the the applications for the events submitted from Ms. Taylor have are not complete and possibly come back for review. So I'm gonna go to Mr. Ledbetter. Regarding the applications and the process of it not being complete as of today as before us. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yeah, so I think I'll just restate for the folks in the crowd here. The question that you have is Chris Taylor has three events here on the agenda tonight to discuss with the city council up for possible review and you're basically stating that you or multiple council members are claiming the applications are incomplete. We have been working with Chris over the last year on a number of events. These are the three events that she's moved forward with. There have been questions over the completeness of those applications with the community development director in the planning manager. You'll see in your packets, there's two letters that are basically saying you need to address these questions before we can move to council. I did meet with Chris and explained to her because she felt that it was slightly unfair that maybe some of these questions were unfair to her in some fashion, or she couldn't answer those questions until she actually got the event date squared away. I think that was kind of where she stood. So I let her know that I would bring these things forward, but hypothetically, the council may have questions that are unanswered within the application. So yes, I guess from the staff's perspective, we have addressed that we also feel that the application is incomplete hypothetically. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. So any other questions or comments from the council members regarding these applicants, councilmen? Who wants to go? Questions, Councilman McCoy?
As I went through my package this week, one of the things I noticed and it is in many things, it's not just with these, but with another one also with the sock hop and we'll deal with that also. But there are two pages of questions as we go through that are come from looks like Ms. Lou Casey. And I have have those there are eleven bullet points. And then there are three sub bullet points. Have those been addressed at this time?
Mr. McCoy, can you tell us what page you're on?
Hey, I'm sorry. I am on ninety, excuse me, eighty nine and ninety of one twenty nine.
Okay.
Good evening, city council members, Mr. Mayor. To answer your question, some aspects of some of these questions have been addressed, but certain important details such as activity locations, infrastructure locations, electrical and power plants and more specific details around the nature of certain activities as presented in the application have not been addressed.
Okay, so my my concern that I will address the council. My concern is the council spending lots of time on this tonight when it is not a complete application. We don't work with other console, you know, applicants when they come in if they need to, if they don't have a complete application and it's not that I would like to, you know, we can look at this again, but we need to see the complete applications. So that we're not, don't look at it again, then send it back, then look at it again and send it back. And pretty soon it's been two or three meetings. So that that that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy. Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor Middleton. I'm in agreement with Councilman McCoy. I think that because we require everybody who comes before us to have a complete application. I would like to see a complete application before this comes before council. And I am just going to toss out there that I make a motion that these are removed from the agenda to come back at a time when they're complete.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Any questions, Councilman K?
I just I really advise that you speak to your attorney as well to make sure that this is, I believe so.
Oh, is he on? Are you up there, Mr. Jared?
Good evening.
Did you hear the conversation and the questions and requests from Councilman Baker?
Yes, I did. We need to be certain this is not a public hearing item. And so reordering the agenda or asking to moving to table the matter to another date is an appropriate motion to be had at this time.
Okay, so it's not a, yeah, so it's not a public hearing. Okay?
It's listed under new business.
Right? Okay?
So at this point, you have a motion on the table. It would be appropriate to see if there's a second and then take a vote on that motion.
This is Councilman McCoy, and I will make the second. And I also want to all, you know, reiterate that when it comes back in fully, you know, when it's fully filled out and we know exactly what's gonna happen. But then at that point in time, if it needs to come back to us, it will come back to us. But it is for the benefit of Chris Taylor to be able to go back and and do this and kind of clean it up and then and then bring it back to us.
So that so that's seven A, B, and C, correct? Councilman Baker? There was?
No.
Wait, am I, oh, I'm sorry. I jumped over.
Seven B, C, and D.
C, D, I'm sorry. Okay. I have a motion from Councilman to bring back items seven B, C, and D. They're the incomplete applications to bring this back to us. And I have a second from Councilman McCoy.
After they've been completed with the people in the with the staff in the office.
Full complete application back before us. Okay? Yes.
I would suggest you go to your attorney for possibly public comment.
Do I go to public comment, Mr. Jared? That we have the event planner wanting to speak. Do I go to public comment before we come back and make the decision?
So with the the applicant wishing to speak, yes, you should. But again, now you've taken this item out of order. The appropriate approach would be to go on with the rest of the agenda and take this up at the proper time.
At what? I can hear you. I can barely hear you. What'd you say?
To take this up at the proper time during the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. What are the wishes of the council? So you want to bring items seven B, C, and D? Correct?
Well, are we bringing them forward to speak to the items which are incomplete? Which is the reason we're pulling ask or asking for the items to be pulled until they can be completed with staff? Or are we, what is the purpose? I understand what Ms. Taylor's purpose is and what she wants to do, and I don't disagree with that. But if are we asking, maybe council can ask us how how deep this goes as far as public comment right now since we are moving to pull the item? And it looks like you have support.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So there's essentially three things going on here. One is to bring an item forward in in the agenda. That's a a motion to reorder. So that you're talking about it now. That's kind of been done. And to go into that in deeper form where speakers are speaking about it, I would recommend a formal motion to reorder the agenda and bring this item forward. That's why my recommendation was just simply take it as it appears in the agenda as item seven, B, C, and D. The motion that was on the table was essentially a motion to table that drew kind of a speaking amendment there became a little bit more to it because of its incompleteness. And that is apparently what the speaker would like to speak to. I would therefore recommend what you do is take this item either through a motion to reorder the agenda and take it right now. Or in its normal course as items, when item seven new business comes up and hear the item for for the purpose of hearing out what the applicant wants to say. The applicant now knows that you believe that the applications are incomplete. And so that's the way I would recommend that you proceed with this item.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jared. Okay, so what are wishes of the council? Do you want to reorganize it or come back to the item when we get there?
At this point in time, I'd rather reorganize it myself, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion. So that's a motion to reorganize the the order from Councilman Keg. So you wanted a second? Okay, okay. Thank you. All right. Okay, so I have the motion to reorder the agenda to bring items seven B, C, and D to the front for discussion. I have a motion from Councilman Keg and a second from Councilman Davis. I will do roll call. Councilman K?
Hi.
Councilman Davis? Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Hi.
And I am Mayor Middleton. So the motion passes. So we will go now back to seven B. And then we will go to for public discussion. Well, but first we'll go to, you want me to read these? I probably should probably read these as well, right? Since we are coming back before them.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend it. I think it would be appropriate in this circumstance to take items B, C, and D, seven B, C, and D together as one item given the the issues that are involved here.
Okay. And do you want me to read every, read them seven B and D or I'm sorry, B, C, and D altogether?
Yes, you could do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So we are discussing seven B, C, and D. So the agenda title B is request for street closures, fee waivers, and consumption of alcoholic beverages for a special event known as Your Body My Canvas. Chris Taylor, event sponsor, has submitted the attached special event application for the special event known as Your Body My Canvas. The event is proposed to take place Friday, September twentieth after the farmer's market, Saturday, September twenty first, and Sunday, September twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. Event sponsor requests permission to close downtown Minor Street, a waiver for those costs of a temporary use permit and costs of staff time and equipment required for the event to take place and approval for the consumption of alcoholic beverages at the event. C.
Mr. Mayor, I think it'd be fun if you just wrote the agenda title for the other two.
Okay. Thank you. C is request for closures, fee waivers, consumption of alcohol beverages, special event known as shadows and illuminations. D is request for street closures, fee waivers, city staff and equipment assistant assistance and use fire department resources of special event known as Kids Block Party. All right. Okay. Ms. Taylor.
Good evening, council members. I'm Chris Taylor, shop serendipity owner.
I want to raise the mic up just a little bit, Chris. I'm sorry.
So three twenty West Minor Street. I was unaware that my applications were still considered incomplete until I just walked in. So this is a surprise to me. After multiple times of resubmitting my application, also sitting down with Jason, trying to get it finished up to their standards. I thought we were good to go. I was not told at any time that they were still incomplete. Secondly, the multiple times that I had to submit the paperwork was there would be a question on the application. I would answer it. I would get an email saying they wanted more detail. So I'd answer that. And then it would be more detail on that same question and it just continued. So at this point, I have to say I'm pretty frustrated because I did not know this was the case. And I'm losing time. Artists are booking out. Musicians are booking out. So I need to know what I need to do to finish this because, like I said, I've submitted it multiple times. And basically, my thing is if it's not on the application and it's something you know, really controversial, if it's not in the application, I shouldn't have to keep anyone shouldn't have to keep going back over and over and over again to answer a question when added detail is basically added to the process. I've gone back. I've gone over paperwork. I've called companies to make sure, even though I haven't gotten to hire them yet, I've made sure that they are licensed, that they work with the cities and the counties when they come in. These are big companies that are going to bring some pretty amazing things to our community. But I just keep getting pushed back, it feels like. And the quote that or the comment that I felt like I was being treated unfairly is the one where body, the body painting event keeps coming back with specific questions that seem to be singled out. And it's it's getting to the point where it's it's excessive. And this has been years and years of this. And I'm not understanding why there's such a pushback on this.
So you feel this?
Hold on a second.
I think just since we have you here, I'm a little confused, Chris, because I sat in my office with you because you refused to work with my staff. And I told you specifically that I would let you come to this meeting, but that the council would assuredly have similar questions and that technically the applications were incomplete. So just as an example, because you're questioning basically my honesty and my opinion here is let's just go to page eighty nine of the agenda and let's ask if these have been answered. And as an example, please provide more detail on the various mediums of art that will take place at the event. The current application states this includes but is not limited to body painting, portraiture, henna art, sculpture, and more. Please clarify what more entails.
So you need and you need a list of every single type of thing that's going to be there?
Yes.
Some of the things that are going to be there are not on city property. So it was mentioned at one point from someone in the city, but if it doesn't happen on city property, it's quote unquote, none of our business. So if it didn't happen on city property, I didn't list it.
Yeah, so you would just need to remove more because at that point, we don't understand what that means.
In the revised edition that I put in there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Jared.
You can certainly continue to have this, consider this matter. But you're also getting into a situation where it's sounding like the application is being amended on the fly here and your staff might not have the opportunity to then analyze it. And it's my understanding that there has been these repeated requests to augment the application. And we have the the documentation as it's before you. As was made previously, there was a motion on the table. But it's been brought to this point. I would say that that prior motion has now died. And so now you're at this position of actually considering this, but this is getting beyond what is typically done with permits of the back and forth. Instead, having a three minute public comment period by an applicant, other public comment, and then cancel action.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jared.
So I need to know, is the Kids Block Party also considered incomplete?
I have a question before we move forward. A question from Councilman McCoy for
Can you clarify yourself? You said a motion came forward, but it has died. Do you want to tell me what that motion was?
That was, I believe that was Councilmember Baker's motion to table the matter that I believe you seconded. That has not been acted upon. And instead, there was a subsequent motion that was made and this whole item was brought forward for discussion, essentially.
No, sir. No, sir. Indeed, that motion was brought forward by Councilman Baker and myself. And then you advised us that we should, we should move this up on the agenda. So no, sir, that is incorrect. What you're advising now. So can we go back then to the original motion?
So you wanted to
Spend time here trying to fill out an application for several things that we don't have. We have no, we don't know the ordinances. The city, the city staff knows the ordinances. Our city manager has told us that they've been working with Ms. Taylor. We would love them to continue to work with Ms. Taylor until we get this straight. This is not something that's new. We get people who bring us things that are incomplete and we have to send it back and have them redone. So but in fact, the the original motion is still on the floor from Mrs. Baker and myself. We only move forward on your, at your behest, sir.
Yes, that was to get the the applicant who wanted to speak on the matter. And there was the idea of having the applicant speak on the matter. So that's where you're at now.
So can we have the applicant speak? We listen and then we go back to our original motion?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what I'm recommending to do.
Thank you, sir.
I think Ms. Taylor has another question.
Okay. All right. So continue.
I just want to clarify that is this the status of the kids block party as well? That you're considering it incomplete?
That's the ones I read because there has been, was there a change, the change to the event? Correct?
To the kids party?
Yes.
The last applicant or application I put in was to have it at this Minor Street Park.
It doesn't state. Aliyah is gonna come up. Do Aliyah, do we have like the map of the park or do we still have the map of the minor street? I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
Okay.
We still need an updated site plan for the Minor Street Park layout and an electrical plan for the power proposal that the applicant mentions in their application.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay, so it sounds like, it sounds like to me that is it's going back. There's still a lot of work to be done on the applications.
Send her the email again where I made the adjustment and put in the Minor Street Park map. So I can do that.
Okay. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go. I'm gonna go back to the recommendation or the the motion for Councilman Baker to have the events come back. And once they're correct, come back before us for the events on the completed application and any changes that are made or any requests that the city staff is requesting from you. I think that's all we can do at this point instead of the back and forth of he said, we said incomplete applications. Okay. So the motion was to bring the events back once the applications are completed and before us have the motion from Councilman Baker and the second from Councilman McCoy.
Can we say that they are completed to the as certified by our office rather than having coming back to us?
Well, I think that's, I think I'm pretty clear when it says completed application, it's ready to come before us. Correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, okay. Okay. I'll go for a roll call. Councilman Keg?
I, that's a tough one. But anyways, I I'm gonna say nay because I think this is, I think there's a lack of some type of communication going on here. I don't know where this is coming from. I'm not blaming anybody right now. I'm just saying I think there's a lack of communication. And I'm not, not really particularly happy with that. So I think there's something that could be worked out and I'm, so I'm gonna say nay.
So, okay, nay from Councilman K, Councilman Davis.
Hi.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
I'm gonna say I, there's obviously communicate, there's obviously somewhere where, you know, we're not, but that's, this is not the council's purview. This is not what we do. We run a business meeting and that sort of thing. So this is up to, and this has always been up to the applicant. So I, you know, I think as long as Aliyah and Juliana and city manager are continuing to work with with Ms. Chris, I think it's fine. I prefer you're not working with him because I prefer you're out trying to bring in, you know, businesses and colors. I'm not getting on you, Jason. You're very valuable to us. You have it since you came, but you know, so I'm, I'm gonna vote to go ahead and have it come back.
All right. And so yes, from Councilman McCoy. So yes, just work with the staff and the staff will work with you to get these applications ready for us when it comes back because we cannot move forward with the ifs, ands, or maybes with an application from anybody. So with that, I will say I. So the motion passes for the one with the nay coming down from Councilman Keg. So thank you. Okay, so now we go back to, this is actually, we go back to way to the top to the consent agenda, our public comment, actually.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, actually, number two, we do have a special presentation.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I gotta go way, I gotta go way back there. Okay. So we'll go back to item number two. So this is special presentations and our announcement. This time slot is for informational presentations, appointments and awards to be presented by the city council or to the city council. This is the Rika Police Department and Sergeant Buker will be speaking to us tonight. Good evening. Let's just wait for the people clear the room before you start. That's okay? So we can hear you. All right. Good evening, Officer Buker. How are you? All right, good evening, Officer Bueker. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you for having me tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to share what we've accomplished with the council members and the mayor. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Sergeant. I'm sorry, Sergeant Bueker. That was disrespectful.
So we have, we have a presentation up on the screen here. I'll kind of go over some of the highlights next screen. So I continue to work with the community to have an understanding of the current laws and the zoning awareness for camping in the city. And I've got to say, I've, over the last month and a half, two months, I'm really impressed with the amount of support that I'm getting from the city and also the residents, specifically right now up on the hill. I haven't gotten too deep into the greenway, but I've got a lot of cooperation from those folks living on the hill and their willingness to help clean it up when we do our cleanup. So it's been really great. So the hill's been fairly well cleaned off. We need to conduct a hand pick and pick up the ground litter. The city crews have done a great job in bringing in the equipment and picking up the big piles of trash and the few tents that we have had to dispose of. Since March, we've had five hundred ninety-nine incidents involving homeless individuals. They're not all necessarily up on the hill, but there are folks that we know that are currently homeless in the city limits of Wairika. And those incidents involve assaults, deaths, medical calls, overdoses, pretty much everything, all the gamut of anything in the book, so it's not anything specific. The thefts and the shoplifting from the south end stores seem to be a little bit higher, but those stores are calling and reporting and hopefully we're doing a good job assisting the local markets stop and catch back some of the theft loss that they're suffering. So the next page. We've assisted in four hillside cleanups with the city. Each of those are a consistent of six to eight dump runs with two dump trucks running. And again, we've only had to remove three tents. One of them was the only one that gave me a little bit of feedback was wanting to maintain a tent, but after three weeks he failed to erect it and removed that tent from the hillside. The other ones were clearly abandoned, littered with garbage and stuff, so we're getting a lot of cooperation with the folks keeping areas clean. I do have one problem area and we'll address that shortly. But we've tried to trash bags. We're using the multi-crisis response team from Behavioral Health to come out when we need to offer people behavioral health services and they're a great resource for us to come out and have a different approach to giving these people the directed where they need to go for assistance. So my goal is, you know, keeping the camps clean, addressing people, letting them know what the zonings are for where they can set up their tents. Sorry about the picture being a little distorted. This is after our first cleanup. It's kind of hard to tell what trash, what's tents and what's trash piles. There's still considerable amount of chance. If you look right in the middle of that page there, there's two separate piles. That was one big pile and we took a big chunk out of the middle of that. And over the next two cleanups, we get that area cleaned up as well, but that's just how much trash was up on the hill when I started. So the next slide shows the trash pickups that I'd scheduled with the city for the third pickup day. That's in the middle of the two red dots. That's the two areas that were left. The bottom right one was actually picked up on the first day and was reassembled to a heaping pile again. So on our, that trash day that picked up most of that. But again, there was considerable amount of trash in those piles or not just a few bags here and there. They're actually mounds of trash and debris. Since starting this and getting the hillside fairly well cleaned up with all the large piles that worked with Ben and Tyler, the city, and we've decided that having the trash pickup areas that we've got in the red squares there will help us be able to drive through and pick up areas. And I believe that the residents that are on the hill will help us by keeping bags of trash and metal separated in those areas and it'll make it a lot easier for the pickup. I think we're at a point where we're not having to take the heavy equipment, the excavator and the front end loader up there. We'll see how big those piles get and we might still need a front end loader, but I'm hoping that we make regular rounds in the pickup, get most of it in the truck and take it out to the city yard and put in the dumpsters that are already out there. This was one of the first site cleanups and that's what the piles pretty much have looked like throughout the hillside when we've been using the heavy equipment. Next slide, this is the one tent where the gentleman failed to erect the tent after three weeks. It was kind of progressed a little bit, but he was still not staying on the hill or at his tent or making any effort to get the tent erected. So we did remove that tent. Next slide, this gal's up towards the top. She's made considerable improvements and cleanup efforts. She's actually made two piles that we were able to clear up on the last cleanup from this. She's consolidated to one tent. And that's, you know, what I'm working towards is working with the folks on the hill to keep their area clean and help pick up the trash. Next slide, this side's my problem tent.
Can I ask you one second? Can you ask them to step kind of over down a little bit, or I can't, I can't hear you?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay.
So this gentleman, I'm gonna have to take another approach at. So I'm missing the first picture. It pretty much looked like the third picture, but with an erected tent at the top. He got a new tent and he slid all the garbage and debris up in between his tent and neighbor's tent. That's the first picture that you see on the left there. The second one on May fifth, he had taken all that stuff on the left of the tent and stuffed it into his tent. On May fourteenth, the tent failed and collapsed and he had started screwing the debris back out. A lot of its clothes and other miscellaneous items. He's had the opportunity to go to the wash point and the laundry point several times and he's still making a mess, so that one we're gonna work on next week when we're up on the hill. Greenhorn Parks hasn't escaped the housing issue and this is a hole dug into the side of the hill and it's got living quarter supplies there. There's a little camp stove, there's some bedding. But again, I haven't had time to get back up there or easy access to get up there with anything to pick it up. I had contacted the Forest Service, or I'm sorry, the Cal Fire, and they will help fill the hole back in when they're doing their exercise marches up the hill, but they won't be able to remove any of the debris, so I'll work with Ben on getting some of that out of there in the near future. Heritage Hut on Minor Street. It's been a problem area as far as people moving in there, especially in the cold weather when it's raining. This was the last camp that was there. That's a full king-size California bed. That's on the ground there and the both sides were pretty much littered with trash and debris and personal items. It had posted it several times. One gentleman wanted to argue with me that he had just got there and but he knew that the sign was posted and we had a discussion and he saw my way, so they cleaned out the camp. City crew went in and ended up mowing the yard and stuff. The mattress was left on the back wall, so we collected all that and disposed of it. So we're pending cleanup from the graffiti and you can go to the next slide. I've already talked with Ben about getting the cleanup for the graffiti that's all around the Heritage Hut there, so that's in the works. But since this day, there hasn't been anybody camped out in there. So the creek west of the property, the state fence line there, from the fence line down to the creek behind Miners Inn. This gentleman is collecting a lot of rocks and has very little camping gear. He's got tents and a little stove. And he is down in the creek, making rock dams in the creek. So this is on the planned cleanup for this Thursday. And it's about eighty yards from Minor Street north along the creek there. And he's got buckets and debris and stuff. You go to the next slide, there's a few more pictures of it, but he's got that kind of stuff along the creek. So what I've seen is Nages is possibly looking for maybe a second dumpster, but it appears that the other citizens where we can want to use it as well, so we're gonna have to come up with another plan for that. The one dumpster, even putting it in the middle, I'm still getting a rift of folks that don't want to walk through the dumpster to drop their stuff off, so that's why I look back to the the squares with the pickup areas that I will hope will alleviate some of this problem so that they don't have to walk one side or the other. I have had some complaints that the porta-potties are outnumbered, so they're not being serviced timely. They're getting disgusting and whatnot before the end of the week when they get cleaned. So things that we've completed was the access road through the center. One of the maps you saw the road through the middle. They did that one. They did another road up through the middle, from the campus road up. So we've got access roads through the middle intersecting in the middle of the hill now. Makes it easier to pick up the trash and get to the people. I have mapped out what campsites people belong to, so that I have names, so I was able to use that this week. Contacting one of the residents with his family in North Carolina and they're hoping to get him, get an ID and get it back in time for his son's graduation, so hopefully we make that work out, but he's got to get a valid ID first, so we're working on that. So I've kind of split the city into thirds. Obviously, the north end with the shopping center. We have a freaking huddle in the corner there. The property owner doesn't want them there, so the property agent works with us and we ask those people to move along. Typically, they're drinking in the corner and moving along, so they've all been warned that drinking in public, they're gonna be able to be cited for that and they need to stop and discuss that. The trees that are between the motel and the restaurant, same property agent has requested permission from the owner to lim up those trees, cut the brush and or remove the trees. That will help alleviate the hiding spots and the folks being able to get in there and camp out without being held accountable for their debris and fires. In central, the fence along the I-five off-ramp there. We're gonna address that on Thursday. The camp that everybody was calling about underneath I-five on Minor Street. That individual, he had moved to the Lennox Street Bridge and he was on top of the bridge, not under the bridge, so he, his hopes is to move to Dunsmere, so I'm working on trying to find him transportation for that. Again, he's got a lot of rock rubbish that he collects and wants to take with him, so Grandma's House seems to be a collecting point for folks hanging out. Had a few sleep in there lately. Usually when we go by, most of the folks will pack up their stuff and move along. It seems pretty effective. Just ask them to move along off their private property. We try to do daily checks in the morning and evenings at the Heritage Hut, Plaza Park and the city parking lots, specifically the one on North Street at Oregon Street. Third street there. South end of town, you have the Rica Junction Shopping Center with Rayleigh's and Walmart. Walmart has a new manager and she's been moving campers and stuff off of their property. She had one towed at a very steep thirty-five hundred dollar plus tow bill to them. So that's what it's costing to get the RVs towed out. That was just the tow. That wasn't the dismantling and disposing of it if it came down to that after they got rid of it, but Rayleigh's has always been calling about people in their parking lots. And we've been working with the property manager and owners there to keep that shopping center free from campers. The Greenway, I'm going to start working on that since we have the hill fairly well cleaned up. The underpass at I-five in the Greenway is completely vandalized with graffiti. There's camping in the parking lot there on Oberlin and also by the billboard behind the auto shop there. We're working on getting those folks moved. I did go down there the other day. One of the gentlemen packed up his stuff and headed up to the hill. He said he told me that he's been living in the creek for seven years and doesn't necessarily want to live on the hill because of the drugs and going on up there, so. But he did move up there. I saw him head up there the other day. And then there's additional camps along the pathway as well. But we'll get, we get those folks visited, get those tents and sites tagged for moving. When I was down there, the first picture is the gentleman that was leaving. The other two, one was vacant and one reluctantly came out and she was advised to also be moving. Those are two other tents that are within that area, the Willows, just north of the billboard of the Oberlin Road. Lennox Street Bridge, it's part of the Greenway project. It's got one overpass over the creek. There had been camps on both sides of it. We've been checking that pretty regularly and there hasn't been anybody down there. Both sides of the embigments or embbuttments are full of graffiti, but at least there's nobody camping in there for right now. Greenway down by Deer Creek, so from Montague to Wairika Road down to city limits. There's a few camps in there, specifically not at the Greenway Park area there. Those folks had moved out a year and a half ago or whatnot. Willow did a good job moving those folks out, but down by the sewer ponds, there's a big encampment. And then there's one a little bit shorter and one right behind the city yard that they've all been told to move, but I've got a I try to plan my tagging them for notices to move when we're able to have the city crew come out and do it. So I talk to them, I tag it, I give them the first notice and then I'll put a red tag on it and let them know that they've got where everything's gonna be removed by the city, so. It's been great working with Ben and Tyler and the city crew. They met all of our needs on getting the equipment and getting a full day's work out of it, even though they're making several runs to the dump. But again, I think we've made progress on the hill and that's those folks want a clean area. They want it picked up, so one of my goals in the upcoming weeks is to have a trash pickup move with civic groups, religious groups and the folks on the hill. And we'll start a police line, we call it in the military, where you start top and come down and handpick up the rest of the trash that it's on the hill. And what the trash pickup points that we've established on the hill, the hillside should become a lot clearer, a lot cleaner, sorry. Anyway, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Mister Mayor, if I could just, I just want to make a statement to Sergeant Bueker that I think we all have just seen the incredible amount of work that has been done on Campus Drive and so we're very appreciative. And I just want to make that statement in public, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Sergeant Bueker. Appreciate it. All right. So now we're at item number three, I believe, correct? Okay. Okay. Item number three, this is public comment. Public participation is welcome and invited at all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item not, I'm sorry, item noted on the regular agenda, please address the city council when that item is open for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane or disruptive remarks. Council members recognized by the mayor may ask clarifying questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under the public hearing or new business sections of the agenda, please address the city council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since council isn't able to take action on any issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or placed on a future agenda item. The public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period or conversations with the council or city staff. Public comment at this time?
I am Steve Bradford, 409 Evergreen. I came here with a really happy heart. Just overwhelmed with gratitude and passion about our town and our county. I love this place. It's so beautiful. I ride a motorcycle. I get out there and this place is just amazing. and and this place is just amazing. And then we have this beautiful, beautiful street being redone. I'm so impressed with the workers, and I came here literally to congratulate Matt and Ben and Jason and the council, whoever's involved with uh you know, watching out that that is working well with the shop owners, the driveways keep being left open for everybody to be, you know, accessible along the drive, the ninety-nine there. Um, you know, those guys are work, I'm a construction worker. I can appreciate what they're doing every morning, every night, all night long. I think they're working all night now nowadays. Um, it's amazing what they're doing. It really is amazing. I'm so impressed. And and with you know, if uh Matt and Ben have anything with with with, you know, say so in 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 coordinating, you know, how these folks are treating the citizens of Waireka and and how well it's working. I'm really impressed. But then I listened to this report by the officer here, and I'm disgusted. This is the work of the councilman. This is the work of the councilman. Since I've lived here for fifteen years, this place has gone down to a shithole. And I am so disgusted with it. This is ridiculous. This is America. This is what we live for? This is what I fought for in Vietnam for this crap? I'm disgusted. This guy, this officer, how much did he have to just pay, or did we just pay him for that report? That took three hours, four hours to write up all that report. Very well done, very detailed, you know, it makes my heart just pound like crazy. I'm so mad right now that we have to live with this. We up here, the rest of us up here that pay the taxes, do our duty to be supportive and 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 be responsible for our lives and our families, and now we have to deal with this? Ninety-nine percent of their job today is dealing with that. That is not what we're here for. We never had this problem long ago before the socialist thing started happening in in America or California, wherever, what what have you, but uh this is not the right way we're going. Where has it come come to in the last fifteen years and the last seventy years when they started welfare? I watched it start happening when I was a kid, sixteen years old. And it's not gotten any worse. They keep any better. They keep throwing money at it. You're throwing money at it. You got I'm paying for them to go potty now? That's ridiculous. Common sense, folks, common sense. This is not getting any better. It's getting worse, and you keep throwing money at it. Just like our stupid president throws money across all of the the country that we don't have no business with, and that we don't have any business with this either. If they're mentally ill, we should be doing something darn right. We should be doing something about it. This guy Mike, I think his name is, the big tall blonde kid. I'm sitting on my motorcycle the other morning out there by Grandma's. He's waking up. He wakes up, he starts screaming and yelling and hollering, and I'm just sitting there minding my own business. And he's, you know, just going off. We've seen, we all know who we're talking, who I'm talking about. He attacked me one time, one morning. I caught him on one of the hose bibs on a property I take care of. And he was taking a shower under the hose bib. I said, you can't do that, man. And you know, he 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 wasn't leaving. He continued to wash himself and stuff, and I had a weed eater in my hands, you know. And uh I said, you gotta move, and I didn't touch it with him, but I just said, you gotta move. You gotta move on. This is not your water. And he turned, when I turned my back, he came up behind me and went like that. And so when I swung around the weed eater at him, but I missed him. I didn't really want to hit him. I just wanted to get him off the property. Well, the other day up here, it's Saturday Saturday morning, I think it was, no, Friday morning, Friday morning. He goes, you want a piece of me? You want a piece, you know, he's he's, the guy's crazy. He belongs in an institution. I've called before about him. He's moved. He used to camp out at the library right here. It started to smell like a a piss hole right there at the library for a while. I called Jason. Jason took care of it right away. But now he's moved down to this to uh Grandma's, and then he's somewhere else to, you know, the next day. But the fact is, that guy has, we all know who I'm talking about. He's got a mental problem. And California's not doing anything about it. You know? Reagan took it away.
All right, thank you. Five minutes times. Thank you.
One more second. Reagan took it away because the the money, the pork money at the top was being abused. That's why he took away the mental health uh facilities we used to have. That's why we don't have those today, because the money was being wasted, just like today. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Don Marie Autry. Um, yeah, I got my voice back. So I was here last time talking about how we might have set a precedence and how it might look to other people, other citizens about how our applications or contracts are not exactly clean when we allow Discover Siskiyou to be willy-nilly with the name. You know, they may change the name, they may not change the name. And then they come with a total different name other than Gold Rush Days, Heritage Days, Two Golden City Days. And this is exactly the problem I knew was going to be coming from Chris Taylor. It looks really selective when you decide that it's okay for Discover Siskiyou to have an application to say whatever. But her application, all of her applications are not good enough. That is what I was trying to tell you last week or last two weeks ago. And here it is. And then the second thing is, I thought we were gonna stop giving away money to people who make money. This is not okay. At what point are we gonna stop doing that? Because it looked like we were going to give away nine thousand something to eleven thousand something. So we're giving away all the money, but we're making all of our citizens pay double on water. And I really need to go back to look at how much money we have given since you all have been sitting here. How much money have we given away? That should be something you're interested in, especially because, you know, you you are the one who who is our watchdog too. How much money have you given away this year or last few years since you've been here? And when is it gonna stop? Because, you know, we need to be giving away money to 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 organizations like SNPs who's gonna help us with a feral cats. But if we give away money to all these other people, how are we ever going to be able to give money to actually them to do spay and neuter? And to do spay and neuter for animals. We've got puppies up there on the hill. You know, SNPs was able to give thirty-two dog shots, Parvo and Distemper, thank God. Two females were not able because they're pregnant and gonna have puppies any day. We should be mandating these homeless people spay and neuter. I mean, they do not pay for license like we all have to. Those dogs should be a hundred and eleven dollars each. Where's the money for that? You know? Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Lorenzo Love. Uh, when is the last time that you did not waiver the temporary use permit? I don't remember you ever not wavering it. And how are you going to justify ever not wavering it in the future when you have wavered it over and over and over again routinely? If you tried to not waiver it, that's that's a selective uh permission. You're gonna be picking on somebody. And how can you justify that when everybody else gets it? So what's the point of having this temporary use permit? Why the nine hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-five cents? Why that value? What does it do? What's the justification for having it in the first place? If you're gonna waiver it every time, get rid of it. People can request a temporary use permit, but don't charge them for it because you don't charge them for it. Who are you going to charge this money for? It seems like everybody gets it. Last week you had uh uh the Els Club Auto Show. You didn't even mention that. That wasn't even on the agenda. But then Els Club had never had anything turned down. Uh, this you need to be consistent. Either get rid of it if you're not gonna be charging for it or charge everyone for it.
Any other public comment?
Dan Osborne, without an E on the end, please, when you put it in the minutes. Good evening. This has been a tense meeting, to say the least. But the first, the main thing I came up for is to remind us all that on Monday, May twenty-seventh, we have Memorial Day. It's not a day of celebration. It's a day of solemn remembrance of those who gave their lives in the service of our country. And I'm here to encourage you all to fly your flags. And remember, there's probably someone in every family who gave their life. Maybe more than one or two. If you had family here in the Civil War, like I did, you can go to end of Civil War parks, national parks in the United States and see all the people. So fly your flag on Memorial Day, please, and but don't celebrate, remember solemnly. Little pause. Now, this next thing. The consent agenda. Item F on the consent agenda. I read through the packet. This is the uh one about the housing project, which will be up near, uh, well, right next to Deer Creek Apartments. I have questions about it because when I read the description of who the housing was for and what was going to be provided, it sounded a lot to me like Siskiyou Crossroads. But without the seriously mentally ill people in it. And from what I understand, and I could have misread it because this was a long agenda packet, two hundred pages, I think, or more, but um as I understand it, Danco Group Home, I think that's the company or Danco Group in Arcata will be filling out the grant application. And it will come back to the city. My concern is, and I guess it's really a question, will it come before the council and when the will the grant application be printed in the agenda? So we can see what exactly they're going to do and what we or they will have to do. And then since the city is the pass through, the city will have to be sure that they do it. That's my my question. And I thank you for your time and for your forbearance when my phone went off during Sergeant Bueker's speech. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marilyn Anderson, and I live at Deer Creek Apartments. And it's been a quiet, peaceful place ever since I've been there for over thirteen years. And uh the mobile home park next to us has a lot of seniors also. And if there is going to be an apartment complex built, please consider a senior complex next to us. Because if it's a one, two, or three-bedroom apartment complex, that means families and you know, all the other things that go. And we have such a uh drug and alcohol problem in Waireka anyway, and the traffic is is going to be really bad too. So I would, I would not care to have that be a multi family person place if if you would consider doing senior apartments. And I'm sure there's a need for senior apartments buildings, because I know there's always people coming to Deer Creek Apartments looking for a place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Cindy Hammer. I'm speaking on behalf, my husband and I, Wayne Hammer. We just really want to say thank you to Sergeant Bueker. This is the first time that homeless camps on Campus Drive have been organized. It's the first time in all of these years that we see campers below the line that has been designated. Um, I'm so excited to hear about the roads where you can drive through and monitor the homeless camps uh in a vehicle. And I'm especially excited about to hear that they're numbered, because these are things I've been saying from the very beginning to set it up like a positive campground where these people can have some pride that they're camping and not just in the gutter. And so uh we have majorly seen a difference. My hat goes off to you. Thank you. And um with that, just ha- thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Really quickly, I'm Wayne Hammer, and we we do have the property that's uh adjacent to that, those uh homeless encampments, and I again want to also thank Bob Bueker and and anyone assisting him on this because we've had fewer incidents of of trespassing in our property and garbage on our property and things, which, you know, it's it's hard. I'm not gonna criticize that. This is a hard thing to solve, and it's all over the country, so I just want to thank Bob and anyone helping him for all their efforts, because we we have seen some positive impact. So I just want to say thank you publicly.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no other public comment, um we'll go to the consent agenda, and then I had a request from Councilman Davis to um for four E to come back for for discussion or comment regarding that to if we could um if that's four E, that is the I don't know. He asked for it to be pulled. He doesn't have to have a an uphold. He asked for it to come back for discussion.
Everybody, it's consent agenda. It's the business that we do. It is the regular business that we do.
I understand that.
Consent agendas, whether they're here, county office, uh, school district, the board supervisor, county agenda is routine. They don't put anything on there unless we think it's routine, so. I mean, I I appreciate what you're saying, but I mean, I think we spend, and I'll say it again, I said at the last meeting, we spend a ton of time pulling things off off the consent agenda. If we don't like the consent agenda, then we need to start directing the city manager not to put a consent agenda on, list everything separate, and then we need to approve it separately. That's just my, you know, I will say, I will say it until until I die. Uh, of course, I was in public school for thirty years, so I've seen this. And I'm just, and and I see it even in private sector with consent agendas, but I I'm going to speak out in 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 on the opposite side, uh, respectfully, Mr. Davis, that I don't see pulling anything off this. If we've looked at it, we've done our homework. that I don't see pulling anything off this. If we've looked at it, we've done our homework, we had questions, we've spoken to somebody in the city offices prior to this meeting. That's what we are paid the big bucks for. And we need to move forward. We need to do the business of the city and, and, and not try to micromanage. If we have an issue, we've got to go directly. I mean, this is what I was taught when I first came on. We go directly to the source and it's that man right there. And then he sends us to whoever we go to. So, and I respect what you're saying, sir.
So is it okay with, uh, he just asked for, I don't know if he had a clarified question. He just asked that we pull it for a question that he might have.
I just want to reiterate that under no circumstances is there really a question about this. Any council member can pull an item off of consent. That is general practice.
That's what I stated. I said, yeah, he requested it be for E then.
However, I will stand by if we are, and I, I, I I respectfully, I will stand by that if we don't want the consent agenda, don't have the consent agenda. We don't need it. We don't have to have it. So let's go item by item. We can do it quickly. I mean, I would advocate for that in the future, so.
Okay, we'll discuss that in the future. So that's okay with the council. We're going to move for E for a question that Mr. Davis had, I guess. Towards the end. So consent agenda, this will be minus four E. So A, B, C, D, and F would be the approval. Consent agenda, all my matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Item four A, approval ratification of payments issued from April 28th, 2024 through May 12th, 2024. B, approval of minutes for special meeting held May 3rd, 2024. C, approval of minutes of the regular agenda may, held May 7th, 2024. D, approval of minutes for special meeting held May 14th, 2024. Is for discussion towards the, or back after we vote. F, adoption resolution 2024-28, a resolution city council, city where you're authorizing the application of the permanent local housing allocation program, non-entitlement, local government, competitive component. G, authorization of the police department to accept block cameras. What are the issues of the council?
Have we pulled E? Have we had a vote to pull E off? Or are we just, can it be, I mean, maybe it can be pulled off by one person?
That's what I understand.
That's my understanding with my time at the county is that it's just pulled off by one individual.
Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve consent agenda items A through D, F, and G.
I have like a motion from Councilman Baker. I'll second the motion. I'll do roll call. Councilman Keg.
Aye.
Councilman Davis. Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Aye.
And Middleton, aye. Okay. So now we will go back to four E for question or discussion requested from Councilman Davis. This is the adoption, adoption of resolution 24-27, resolution of the city council. They're adopting a catastrophic leave policy to be included in the personal properties and procedures manual. Mr. Davis?
Me?
You requested for E?
Oh, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, just because the structure now has changed like this is a new business item. And so ultimately you'll get your staff report.
Okay.
There'll be council discussion. There'll be public comment, and then there'll be the so.
So you want staff to go first?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Mr. Elsnapp could then just introduce it because there may be other questions that come about based off of his staff report.
Okay, hold tight. All right.
So good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Elsnapp. I'm the HR Director. So the catastrophic leave policy, just to give some background to it, it's not a new policy. It's a revision to the old one that frankly didn't work. It wasn't utilized, from my knowledge, for at least 10 years. So when an employee had a catastrophic event, serious health condition, they can't come to work where they're going to lose their insurance. Employees could typically donate sick leave or vacation hours to help pay their premiums. Under the old policy, it just had some terms that were too strict and it, it wouldn't work. And we, employees have serious health conditions all the time that we do leave cases for. So we worked with the unions during bargaining. We pulled out the policy that didn't work out of the contracts. We worked, worked together over the course of about six to nine months, revised it, brought it back. And I don't see this policy being something that's going to be abused because it wasn't used for over 10 years. You do need medical certification from a physician in order for it to be approved. Jason would be in, the city manager would be involved. I would be involved. And it's, it's to help employees when they, they have serious health events or their family.
All right, thank you. So council members, questions regarding for E?
Now?
Yep. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't think this is something that cities should have in their negotiated packet. I think it can lead to unrest within the employees. There's a couple of ways that this can work, and I'm pretty sure that I understand what Mr. Elsnapp is, has written. That if a person has used up all their personal leave, medical leave and, and comp leave, they can put a request out for somebody else to use some of their leave for them. And this can happen. And it's sometimes it's a good thing, but also can be a negative thing. And, and the negative part of it is, let's say the person that donates, Mr. McCoy, donates to me. And he gets into a catastrophic event. And he comes back and he says, Mr. Davis, I need to get my leave back because once he's given it to me, it's gone. It's no more. It's mine. And I say, no, I, I don't have that leave to give. So there you go. He was kind enough to give, and I'm not going to reciprocate. There's a serious problem then in your office. The other way is this use it or lose it thing. And I don't know what our contract has on on your leave of absence, comp time, or sick leave. But those things no longer can be use it or lose it. If you get to a point where you say you can only have 52 hours of this type of leave, and you get to 60, well, the, that person will get paid for those. He won't lose it. So that person is better off keeping it for themselves. And I just think it just leads to negative things. But the good part is if somebody is really catastrophic and they need it and somebody contributes and they are allowed to continue with what they are to rehabilitate so they can get back to work. So that's kind of double edged, as far as I'm concerned, but I, I think it can cause more problem than not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Any other council members with questions or comments?
Thank you. Um, is, are the donations to the catastrophic leave pool, are those anonymous to the person who's receiving them?
We would need to, most likely, you know, so this, just to clarify, it hasn't been done for 10 years. So we're, we would be able to design it. However, you know, if the person wanted it to be anonymous, we could probably figure out a system for that. But we've never had a signup list for donating hours, but I'm sure that's something we could, we could create a process for. I've seen it both ways. Primarily, I've seen it where there's a signup list and the person writes their name and how many hours they want to donate. But we could definitely look at making something anonymous if that made the person more comfortable who needed the catastrophic leave.
Um, thank you. I know that when I worked for Siskiyou County, we had a catastrophic leave pool. And I understand Councilman Davis's point of view and his concerns, but my experience was that it worked well at the county.
Absolutely. And just to add on to that, this isn't just one, people don't, employees don't just donate to one pool. You, you apply individually to the person that's requesting it. And it is voluntary.
Thank you.
Councilman McCoy?
So can you clarify, Ben, just any, just school district I work in, you donate to a pool. Well, I don't think we've ever had more than one person that had it long term, or when I was in my school, except maybe, except maybe unified where we had several thousand teachers. We didn't have anybody, we had two people that had cancer or anything, anything catched off at one time. And what then, i- if we all decide we want to donate? And usually it's the boss that goes out and says, Mr. Jones or Mrs. Jones is sick, she's going to run out of sick leave. Would you like to donate? And usually they say, I would prefer you donate no more than a day. Because they don't want, not even don't want tons of sick leave on the books. And then you use that. Then if there's a need for more sick leave, then the city manager would go back out and say, oh, it's been 100 days, 100 sick days, which would be like four, four and a half months. We do need yours for more. And then you go in and donate either half a day or a day. Is that correct?
The way the policy is written is it doesn't go into that about posting it multiple times. You know, the intent of the policies to help people out. And I don't believe there's anything in it that would preclude that from being able to make a second request in order to help someone out. But it is just, there is limits on how many hours can be donated by each employee and the total hours that can be received by the person with needing the leave.
So you don't get too many of that.
Yeah.
Again, I'm not sure who charges you now, since I know again, the education, you don't carry things over. And I know even with my brother and nephew that works in university, they don't carry over, they don't carry over vacation, but they do carry over sick. Is that what you were alluding to though? Okay, yeah. If in fact, well, I'm at home because we had, we've talked about this before. So now you've answered my question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy.
Sir, just common practice on a lot of other cities and stuff too. I guess it's in the private spectrum. I'm like, wow, then we obviously don't do that sort of thing. But is this common practice for other cities? Obviously there's the county, so I don't know. Is that common practice for other cities?
I believe so. If you review cities, MOUs or personnel policies, in my opinion, it is absolutely common. It's, they have one at the county. I'm, I am just going off my memory. I know the city of Reading has one and as well as many others. I'd have to fact check on, on Reading, but to my knowledge, that is correct.
Just curious, I said in the private spectrum, doesn't, you know, we obviously, we can't afford to do that. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes. Another question?
I understand that the county as of the first of the year has changed their catastrophic leave program to the, because the law of the state of California changed where you don't use it or lose it. You have to get bought out on it. And that rule that Ms. Baker was speaking of is no longer in existence. But that's what I understand. Now that might be sort of right, but I think that's what it is. So and, and I don't know if John is talking about, excuse me, Mr. Elsnapp is talking about a pool? Or if it's just voluntarily set aside, I would be glad to give five days of leave.
It's, it would be closer to the second option. There is no, there is no just random pool. People donate and continue to build it up. It's, it's
There's no pool.
Correct.
Okay. The other thing that I read in there was that it would be, this leave would be donated at the value of the person that's receiving it. So for example, let's say the, one of the clerks in the office donates to Mr. Ledbetter. We have a budget issue going on. So it comes in at his wages rather than their wages.
Yeah. The one comment I could make to that is a majority, you know, department heads probably make up less than, definitely less than 10% of the city. So a majority of your employees are admin techs, operators, maintenance workers. And the leave is more, you know, they have a lot better chance of taking advantage of those hours versus us. There's just a smaller percentage of us, but that is correct. There is some, some wa, kind of a washing effect. But it can also go both ways as well. I can donate my time to a new hire. And my sick leave, my rate of pay was, is quite a bit different.
So it would be less.
It would be less in that case.
Well, I, I'm not for it, just so you know.
Okay.
Okay. No further questions from the council. I'll go to for a public comment. And this is for four E on the consent agenda.
Hi, my name is Louise Gliano. I live in Waireka. And I'd like to speak to that issue. I had a brother who was dying of brain cancer and he worked in California, the California Franchise Tax Board. And he was only like a month away from retirement. And had he, because he missed this time, he would not qualify for retirement. And we needed that money to take care of him in a group home and, and a facility. And so this was years ago, and I don't know what the policy is at the franchise tax board now. But the way they did it is that people could donate either their vacation time or their sick time. And it went by the hour. I don't think it went by what your pay scale was. And I can tell you that was an awesome program. That really saved us. That helped him. And my brother died at peace because of that. He was worried about getting his bills paid. And I think that's an aw, awesome thing to do for people here. And I highly recommend it. And I respectfully, respectfully disagree with you, Mr. Davis. I, if you've never been in that situation and it was, I could not believe the generosity of the people there at the board. So anyway, I, I would totally support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close public comment and we'll go back to item four E. What are the wishes of the council? So this is the adoption of resolution 24-27, resolution city council, city of Waireka, adopting a catastrophic leave policy to be included in the personal policies and procedure manual. Council McCoy?
So moved.
I have a motion, Councilman McCoy.
I'll second the motion.
And a second from Councilman Baker. I'll do roll call. Councilman Keg.
Aye.
Councilman Davis. Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton, aye. The motion passes four to one with this, Councilman Davis voting no on four E. Okay. Thank you. No fiber six. So now we will go to seven A. This is the agenda title. This will be the planning manager. This is discussion possible action regarding the request to waive a temporary use permit fee for a special event known as Waireka Elks Lodge Father's Day, sock hawk, hawk, hop, I'm sorry, to be held on June 15th in the parking lot at 401 South Main Street, assessors parcel number 054-186-010. Brent Philippi is the event sponsor on behalf of the Waireka Elks Lodge, number 1980. Has submitted a request for a fee waiver for a temporary use permit for a special event known as the Waireka Elks Lodge Father's Day Sock Hop proposed to take place in the parking lot of 401 South Main Street, again, APN number 054-186-010. Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Thank you for the summary. I would just like to Um, I would just like to uh reiterate that this Sock Hop is essentially a part of the Golden City Days event happening on the same day. So Brandt Philippi of the Elks Lodge, who is organizing this event, has been working closely with Discover Siskiyou. So these are kind of a conjunction. And just to clarify, the request being uh proposed to you today is a fee waiver for a temporary use permit as required for all events per our municipal code. Um, normally this event, since it's on a pri- in a private parking lot, it's in the parking lot across from the wine bar. Um, this would normally be ministerially approved. But because the applicant is requesting a waiver for the temporary use permit, it's being presented to the city council for uh determination. So um the fiscal impact would be um nine hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-five cents for the temporary use permit. And the um, there's no recommended action um from the city staff. But like I said previously, it would make sense to uh waive the fee since it is essentially a part of Golden City Days and the Father's Day Car Show happening the following day on Sunday. So the possible action for you to consider tonight is a motion to direct the city manager to waive the temporary use permit fee for the special event known as Waireka Elks Lodge Father's Day Sock Hop. We do have the um applicant here tonight. Uh, Brandt is here to answer any questions you have about the event and I'm available for any questions you have as well. So Brandt, do you want to come up?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, just really want to thank you guys for considering this. Um, the Sock Hop was my brainchild. Um, I remember a Waireka that used to have sidewalk days and chili cook-offs and car shows and free events for the public. And they were a lot of fun as a kid. You lived for the car show, you lived for the sidewalk days and the fair. And I want to bring some of that back. I'm moved away, grew up here, moved away, came back, got involved with the Elks Lodge. Saw an opportunity and I'm running with it. Uh, this is my first event, putting something like this together. Uh, I kind of feel like Kevin Bacon right now, asking for a dance in front of the city council on Footloose. I don't have my Bible with me. However, um it's going to be a, a, a fun time, a free event. In fact, um, I have the wine bar co-sponsoring it. I have TNT Auto Body co-sponsoring it and the Elks Lodge are going to co-sponsor it to bring one of the local bands um here to play live. No alcohol at the event. It's going to be a good time. Um, and I really hope that you consider waiving the fee because it is costing us. We're not making any money off of this. And I just want to, I want to bring some fun back to Waireka. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandt. Just hold tight in case we have some questions from our council members. So go to council um for questions and to public, any questions from council members or comments? Councilman Davis?
Sure. Um, Mr. Philippi, it's good to see you back.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Um, are are you charging entrance fee?
No, we are not. For the public, all ages.
So the, the band is donating or you're getting that through your sponsor fee?
Their sponsors, the three sponsors are going to pick up the six hundred dollar fee.
Uh, are are you having the place roped off or is it just going to be open like it is now?
It's going to be open like it is now. I'm going to uh post some trash cans around the outside of the perimeter so the trash can be taken care of, anything like that. And then we are also going to have some Elks members wandering around, making sure that people aren't blocking off the street and keeping that area clear.
Thank you.
Just a comment, that's all.
Okay, Council McKay?
Thank you for putting it, putting it on. It's a car show and stuff. It's been going hand in hand with the with a lot of events that we've done in the past, especially with the uh previously Gold Coast Days and stuff. So it's um it's good to see that. It's a big, it's a big event and I hope to see more events in this town. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that was the, the idea of bringing it back to the city, not having it out in the fairgrounds away from the public, bringing it back into the city limits where everybody can, can have fun.
All right, Councilman McCoy?
Thank you for doing this. It's wonderful. I, I have I can remember when I first moved here. I don't remember the sock hops, but I do remember the uh sidewalk sales and things. Um, in your application, you note that you may need possible reserve officers. What are we, is it twenty dollars an hour for our reserve officers or what do we pay them?
Substantially more than twenty dollars an hour.
Okay, so um, how would you cover that, that expense to the city?
I spoke to um Chief Gilman about that issue. It wouldn't be, the officers would be at the um sock hop as patrol officers. He was just going to bring two additional reserve officers on during that night because of all the festivities. And he said that they, all the years that he's had sock hops, he's never had an issue at the sock hop. So.
So would they be assigned specifically to the sock hop or would they be assigned to uh the, 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 the whole shebang?
It's my understanding they would be uh assigned to the whole city because of everything that's going on that weekend.
So there won't be, there isn't necessarily a police officer there?
No, sir. And there shouldn't be a need for it.
Okay. And then is there a need for K rail or fencing to keep people from stepping out onto a highway? That is, in areas is three and four feet down in that, spec- specifically in that area where they're putting new drains in?
Are you um asking, Tab, are you want to ask the uh?
Well, I
for city manager? I just want to make sure the direct, the
I see that the, that the chief is coming around, so I'm adjusting it to both Mr. Philippi.
I just want to, I just want to make sure the question's directed to the appropriate person.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. So I just plan on bringing people out for that whole weekend. It's not just his sock hop. We have a lot going on, so I'm going to have extra officers on duty that was assigned to the city. Um, I don't think it's going to be an issue for K rails and stuff. He's going to have his own people out there protecting them. It's not a city event, so I don't want to take responsibility for trying to block everything off and say that I'm in charge. That's up to them.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. Is it something that you and the uh Mr. Ledbetter, you and the uh uh chief of police have chatted about as far as, I'm, I'm assuming it's probably a sudden.
Uh, generally speaking, our planning manager reaches out to the fire chief and the police chief when it comes to these events and they're involved in the planning. This one is it would be different and we would be talking about K rail possibly if we were on uh public property or city property and, and this is on private property. And so that's why essentially really these facets of the event have already ministerially be, been approved. And really what's in front of you tonight is just the waiving of the fee of the temporary use permit. Whereas all of these other things internally have met the standard of the city and, and the city as itself through the planning manager has approved the temporary use permit, but now there's the caveat of waiving the fee, which is what we're here to ask the city council if whether or not they would like to waive that fee if that makes sense.
Thank you. I will yield the rest of my questions and, and hold them since it's not appropriate.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Thank you.
Why are you looking scared at me?
I grew up in Waireka, so I remember those street dances at sidewalk sales days and it was just a lot of fun and you did look forward to it. Um, but um, my question is directed towards city staff in that, can you explain what a use permit? What the necessity of it? I know that it's part of our municipal code. Um, and what is covered under a use permit?
Yeah, there's a, a, a litany of things that are covered under a temporary use permit and just because this is new for the city council and the city of Waireka staff ultimately because just recently when we were investigating Civil War days, uh, that's when our planning manager really had a thorough look at that particular event with our city attorney. And then our city attorney really dove into the municipal code uh to review kind of what the requirements were. And at that point, we were directed that technically, I think uh in the past, we were doing things incorrectly, that all special events do actually require a temporary use permit. And so that's why this is a new cost. Normally, when we have people in front of the city council for an event, they're looking to waive the fee to close a road. They're looking to waive a fee to possibly get a stage. And in this instance, this is only now, I think, the second or third event that's come to you, that's the requirement of a temporary use permit, but they're extremely broad. They're ministerial and they're admin- they're administered by the planning manager at the planning manager's discretion. And it could be for events like we're talking about, or it could be for, let's say, somebody has a piece of property. There's no development on that property. And let's say Caltrans wants to use that property uh for a project, or the person that owns that property is going to do a project. They would come into the city. They would explain the use that they have for their own property. There's no house on the property, so uh, they may be advocating that they want a fence. Well, a fence requires an outbuilding or a house, but in this instance, since they're doing a very specified function, I use this as an example because somebody just got a temporary use permit to do this. Uh, they would be issued a temporary use permit that could last up to, I believe, twenty-four months. In this instance, uh, all events, which was brought to our attention by Mr. Jared here in the last couple of months that um we did not realize as city staff, but all of our events require a temporary use permit. So now you correlate that temporary use permit back to a fee schedule. And so when the city went and did updates on temporary use permits, really, in my opinion, we were looking at things such as a fence on a property, staff time that it takes to really engage that item is built into that nine hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. It's based off of actual math on how, how um how much time is generally needed to do a temporary use permit? When it comes to an event such as the one that we're talking about, uh, that cost may be substantially lower. It may be substantially higher. I mean, I think when we did um the Civil War days, it was probably more expensive because we had more kind of time and legal time looking into the safety of that event with uh black powder and all that, uh, that other, those other things that go into play at that event. Um, but in this instance, it is a relatively new thing for the city council to consider. So I think we need to be cognizant of that and we may want to split our fee schedule in some way. Or really, I know internally and at the finance committee, we've advocated for the possibility of exploring really a special event ordinance that really changes the laws for the city on how we uh engage all of these costs, all of these items. And getting more stability and more structure for the staff to um really have something to lean on when we're engaging people. And then really streamline this process at the council. And so we're advocating that inevitably we need to work towards that, which would clear up this temporary use permit question. But that is the history of the temporary use permit and its intent, that technically odd items such as a fence or, or different temporary uses, it's the staff's time on average to get to the final cost. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Can I just add on to that? It's um, that was a great explanation and just more broadly, um, it would address like different types of temporary land uses for um different activities such as events on public or private property or storage yards. Um, so different types of land uses that can impact um z- zoning, safety, circulation, um, items like that.
So is it fair to say then uh temporary use permit for a special event really could be looked at? Um, because I know that we do have fees in place for street closures, s- stage rental. Um, so this really I almost see it as like a category of uh temporary use permits that maybe uh it would be beneficial for uh the city to review and come up with some recommendations to bring before the finance committee.
Yeah, I think that could be, as an example, when you look at public works, you have two different types of encroachment permits, a simple and a complex. And they have different costs associated with them. And so if someone's just doing something very simple in the right of way, then that's a simple. If somebody is doing a gigantic project tearing up part of the road, then that's obviously much more complicated. And that would have a higher cost associated with it. And so it's, it's relatively discretionary, right? Because on cer- on certain items doesn't take a lot of time to get to an answer. And on other items, it's going to take substantially more time out on an event that could cost substantially more than nine hundred and forty-two dollars, to be honest with you, of staff time, because we're always talking about the staff time of a public works employee to shut the road down. But we're never talking about the staff time in city hall to bring the paperwork forward and all of that work. That's really what that fee is associated, but I do think that a dive into the math on some of these simple events that come forward, lowering that cost is probably prudent.
Thank you very much for your explanations.
Thank you, Council Baker. So basically what you're saying, it's, it's never black and white. It's not one size fits all when it comes when everybody sees the temporary use permit for just different um events, properties, what have you. So, all right. Okay, so I will go to public comment at this time. Nobody? All right. I will close the public comment for that item and I will um come back to council for item seven A. What are the wishes of the council? Uh, the recommended city count, I'll read again about the recommended city council action. Excuse me, I'm sorry, for you is the motion to direct the city manager to waive the temporary use permit fee for the special event known as Waireka Elks Father's Day Sock Hop.
So moved.
Of the motion from Council McKay.
I'll second that.
A second for uh Councilman Davis. I'll do a roll call. Uh, Councilman Kay?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Council McCoy?
Councilman Baker. Councilwoman Baker. I see your pain. I feel it. We both look at this together and I think it's something I'm going to say yes. But I think it's something that I would agree with you that, you know, we'll go ahead and continue to work towards a solution that cuts out some of the so, you know, gives more power within the office so they can make decisions. They don't have to rely on us. Cause it's a very simple decision to make.
Thank you.
I'm a yes vote.
Yes, okay, great. And um so before my vote, I just wanted to say that it is a work in progress with the um permits and um finance committee and though um there'll probably be some changes coming down the road of review and different fees when um a lot of uh events, people come for us. It's going to be changed, but right now, because it's kind of a surprise to a lot of our um citizens right now that the change will be coming. But right now I will um go ahead and vote yes as well. So the motion passes five to zero to waive the um fee at this time. Thank you. All right. Okay. So we uh are moving down to okay, item number eight. This is city manager.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, seven E, seven E?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, seven E, this is uh discussion possible action regarding the quest to waive the temporary use permit for the special event known as Bicycle Rides Northwest to be held June twenty-second, June twenty-third. It's not supposed to be, it says June twenty-ninth at Jackson Street School. Is that a typo? Oh, they come back, oh, they come back in. Okay. Just want to make sure. June twentieth, Jackson Street School. Jim Moore, Moore is the event sponsor, has submitted a request for a fee waiver for the temporary use permit for a special event known as Bicycle Rides Northwest. Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I don't think I actually introduced myself. This is Alia Roca Lesra, Planning Manager. Um, so, thank you for the summary. Um, this is a request um for another waiver for a temporary use permit for Bicycle Rides Northwest. They're hosting a bicycle tour throughout Siskiyou County that includes an overnight stop in Waireka uh arriving June twenty-second. Uh, arriving June twenty-second, staying the night, uh, departing June twenty-third. And then finishing in Warricka, June twenty-ninth. Um, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the event will be held at Jackson Street School all three of those days. There will be uh, overnight tent camping, catering and other activities as in um. As included on their special event site plan, which um, is in your packet. Um, I would like to clarify, this is a similar request as Civil War Days. And the sock hop, however, it is a private event. It is not open to the public. Um. The event sponsor, um, Jim Moore, who is on the line with us um, on Zoom. Is requesting that the city council waive the fee for an issuance of a temporary use permit. Again, the fiscal impact for that is nine hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. There is no recommended action from the, um, from city staff. Um. And the question being presented to you tonight um, is would you like to approve the request? To waive the temporary use permit for this event? Jim Moore is available for questions, as am I. Jim, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. The council, uh, thank you for listening to this and having, taking the time. Um, our organization Bicycle Rides Northwest is a nonprofit. We've been doing this for thirty-five years, running tours throughout the Northwest. We do week-long tours for about three hundred riders, fifty or sixty crew, excuse me. Moving from town to town. And so in this case, we were um, negotiating with the school district to use Jackson Street Elementary. And that's going to be, our event is going to be completely enclosed within school grounds. So we weren't sure whether our permit was necessary, but we were told that the best way to approach this would be to just ask for a waiver of the fee for a permit. Uh, we're not using any city resources or facilities other than bicycle traffic, which is no different than any other traffic. Um, also, we are giving grants to the school. We are offering fundraising opportunities for. School kids and groups and uh, it's a private. Event, just in that we're just there camping and we have our own caterer and our showers and our toilets and then we just ride down the road. So we're starting and ending the tour in Warricka.
Alright. Thank you, and I'll go to um. My council for any questions or comments? Council Baker.
Thank you. So it's my understanding that this is a private event that is not open to the public. And um, are the participants required to pay any kind of fee or, you know, like entry fee?
Yes, to cover our costs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Okay. Councilman McCoy.
Um, Jim, I believe this probably came through, last time I saw it at Jackson Street, I was working there. A couple summers, uh, somebody used it and they were starting up at somewhere up in Oregon, coming down the coast and going somewhere down into California. Um, you're starting here, I don't know if that was you or not.
No, it wasn't.
But you're starting here and then where do you go before you come back?
Yeah, just as a, a little background, we were going to do this in twenty eighteen and we were within a week of doing the event and then fire. Broke out. So between that and COVID, now we're finally trying to come back and do this. So the route is we're starting in, in uh, Warricka and riding to Happy Camp. Spending two nights in Happy Camp and then riding to Etna, two nights in Etna, riding to Weed, two nights in Weed and then back to Warricka.
Okay, and what is the, how many riders do you think you're, how many riders do you have registered currently?
Uh, our limit is three hundred. We're about three hundred and ten right now, but uh, it's four weeks away. We get cancellations. I think it'll be right around three hundred.
And what is the cost for a ru- single rider?
It's one thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars. That's all inclusive of everything. Um, to clarify on the pricing and the fact we're charging, we just take the cost of the event and divide by the number of riders and that's the price. We don't, we're a nonprofit, we're not trying to make money. We're actually a C-seven nonprofit, which is a social benefit group. So it's basically the equivalent of just taking your friends out for a bike ride and having them chip in to pay for it.
So are you like a five oh one C? And so you are a non-paid staff member, is that correct? You don't draw salary or any draw or any money uh, from this um, private, from this five oh one C three?
No, I am, I am the executive director of the organization. The board hires me to manage the event. It's a year-round job, actually. It's a lot of details. We do two of these tours each summer and so it takes me all year to plan them, permits and vendors and et cetera.
Okay, and are you the only employee of this uh, five oh one C three?
The crew members we bring along on the tour are temporary employees. We pay, we don't use volunteers. We actually pay our crew to be on the tour. So they're temporary employees.
And how many crew members do you bring and what's?
We're gonna have about forty-five and then the vendors, the shower company, the catering company, they bring their own crew as well.
And then your um, your hourly rate to, not the vendors or the shower crew, but your hourly rate for um. The forty-five employees you carry with you, what is that?
Uh, we pay them a weekly stipend, actually. It's a salary as opposed to an hourly rate. It starts at around a thousand dollars and goes up to two thousand dollars for the week.
For the week?
Yeah.
And this last, this particular ride is for how, how, how many weeks? One?
Yeah, they're all one-week rides, starting on a Saturday and ending on a Saturday.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet.
Just to clarify your answers, um. Cause I did not hear, I'm sorry. Did you say it's uh, sixteen seventy-five per rider?
Yes.
And then you have two hundred and ten currently registered?
Three hundred and ten.
Oh, three, okay. Okay? No questions? No questions? Okay. We can talk out to. Public comment? Sorry.
I'm Maria Otry. Um, this is in my wheelhouse. Um, I cooked for bike riders for ten years. And I know exactly how it is. And the fee that they collect and the sponsors that they have. Pay for all of the events. It's all usually covered. Um. And as I say, I did it for ten years. I cooked. I followed them from Washington State to Washington DC. I know exactly how it works. And, and they should be paying for it. I know that they say that they're a nonprofit, but. Someone's paying their catering company. Someone's paying for all of their, their um, employees. So they should be paying the we, the waiver. They shouldn't, we should not waiver it. We should, they should be paying the fees. Thank you.
May I address that?
Uh, I'll come back to you after uh, I close public comment. Uh, any other public comment? Or questions?
Uh, Nancy Ogren, Siskiyou County Supervisor for District Four here in Warricka. Um, one clarifying comment, did you say you were a nonprofit C-seven? Five oh, five oh one C-seven?
Correct.
Not C-three, no, C-seven.
C-three.
I heard C-seven. Okay, that, that was just for clarification. Um, I'm curious with all of these. Three hundred-ish people. Um, do they have a chance to visit the communities that they ride through or are they just rolling through?
And I'll have you answer the questions when she gets done answering those questions, then we'll go back to all the public questions.
They're allowed to spend money in our communities.
Alright. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll close public comments. So you had uh. Two questions for. Um, Supervisor Ogren and then you had uh, you wanted to clarify from our citizen, um, Ms. Otry. Mr. Bo.
Yeah, so uh, starting with the first speaker, uh, we actually don't have sponsors. Um, we don't have any other source of income. As I explained, uh, our. Organization and our tours are paid for strictly straight through the riders. We take the total cost, including the caterers and the shower trucks and the vans and all the things that we have. And I do a budget that has the total cost of that and we divide by the number of riders. So there's no profit, there's no money being put away. I mean, it's a true nonprofit, especially the C-seven status. To reiterate that a five oh one C-seven is a social benefit group. It basically exists only for the benefit of its members. So that they can do what they do, in this case, ride bikes. So there's no. Sort of capitalism uh, profit motive here. We just take our, our folks to different towns and different places to ride and uh, they chip in and pay for it. As far as uh, engaging with the communities, that's a huge emphasis for us. So we have. Uh, we'll be talking to people about what's going on in Warricka um, before the tour. If they want to come in a day earlier, the day they come in on Saturday, they don't have to be in our camp until six. And then we have what's called layover days, which is when we're staying two nights in, in Happy Camp and two nights at Etna and two nights in Weed. And we have uh, local activities, museums. We're gonna have a barbecue fundraiser in Etna. And uh, the restaurants there, we're not gonna serve lunch one day so that people will go in and spend money on the restaurants. We're gonna have local speakers, speaking about geology, um. Dam removal, other, other topics. And we pay them stipends to come and speak to our, our writers. But we engage with the towns as much as we can. That's why we have the community grant program as well. In each community for each day that we're there, we give a thousand dollar grant to whatever project they identify as needing help. So we're gonna help the daycare center in Happy Camp and we're gonna help the Police Athletic League program in Etna. And the school in Warricka, we're giving, we're paying the school, uh, let me think about this. It's twelve hundred dollars. Six hundred for the camping fee and six hundred dollars for parking. Plus a thousand dollar grant that will go to whatever they need um, to supplement, I guess.
Alright. Thank you. Okay, so. Alright, so um. Weird questions from audience and the staff. So the recommended city council action is um. Is asking for the fee to be waived for the temporary use permit fee for the special event known as. Bicycle Rides Northwest. Private event. What are the wishes of the council? Not everybody jumped up at once. I look surprised and thought here.
Still move?
I have a motion for Councilman Keg. Uh, motion, motion, it looks like dies, uh. We're on support, just had the one motion for approval and the other council member is supporting that motion. So, okay. No, no, I know that. Yeah, that's why I said the motion. It's um, stalls. Okay, so the motion dies for lack of seconds. So I, um, I'm assuming now if the event is to go forward, that the fee does have to be paid, correct? Mr. Ledbetter?
I'm sorry, I was. I was saying, uh, due to the motion failing, if the event was to go forward, that, that Mr. Moore in the event known as. Bicycle Rides Northwest would have to pay the um, fee, correct? Yeah, ministerially, it's approved by the staff based off of um. The work that they did reviewing the application and really at this point, it was just to discuss the waiver. And it sounds like the motion kind of died. And so ultimately, we would be then as staff. Directing Mr. Moore to pay that fee uh, for the event to happen. Um, ultimately. There's no camping in the city, you know, uh, of Warricka. So there's really, we don't allow the camping over at the. The school, so ultimately there would be a violation. So you'd be paying the fee to make sure that that was approved and appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. So you have a direction to be in talks with Mr. Moore to um. Complete his application, should he move forward to pay the um, event fee, correct?
Yeah, we'll reach out to Mr. Moore tomorrow.
Right, thank you. Okay, now onto item number eight. This is city manager. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Have a good evening. Item number eight, city manager and staff report. City manager and staff may make brief announcements or reports at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Warricka City Council, Jason Ledbetter, city manager for the city of Warricka. So. Uh, just uh, about eight things to go over with you tonight on five-nine. Uh, I attended the Siskiyou Conservative Republicans Meeting in Montague as a guest speaker for the state of Siskiyou Panel. Uh, we have posted the code enforcement position uh, online. Uh, we're currently recruiting for that and uh, currently the clerk, myself. And the fire chief are meeting weekly to go over kind of the weed abatement complaints that are coming in. That's the major thing that we're tackling with code enforcement. But then the city clerk and myself are at this point, until we get someone hired, are working on the major code enforcement complaints. Uh, I met with uh, an individual by the name of Mia Lewis, a grad student at UCLA. Uh, did that with the community development director. Uh, she is doing a special project with uh, Bruce Deutsch of the Dunsmere City Council. Uh, on behalf of really the local transportation commission. Mia is writing a plan that attempts to answer the following question. How can rural municipalities like Siskiyou County utilize data-driven insights, best practices from successful case studies? And innovative transportation models to improve mobility, accessibility. And overall transit service quality for both residents and tourists. Uh, that's something that Mr. Deutsch is working on with Mia. So hopefully we'll see that at the local transportation commission soon. Uh, South Oregon Street Rehab Project has started. They started to uh, basically tear down. The ends of the sidewalks and replace those with the ADA sidewalk ramps. So those are getting installed. And just as a reminder to everybody, that project is from four H all the way down, just past Finn Walls. Uh, that's what is going to be replaced or rehabbed as part of the road. Uh, the wastewater collection project is still active and all over the city, if you have not noticed. Uh, the Oak Street Alley is currently getting work done. Nap Street had worked done and obviously the Burgess Street neighborhoods. Uh, the First Farmer's Market on Minor Street uh, this season kicks off Friday, May thirty-first at three PM. Fire Chief Lemos and I released our first of two educational videos about Warricka Fire Department to Facebook yesterday. Uh, this educational video focused on volunteer response versus increase in medical calls. The final video, we will shoot at the Siskiyou Media Council. Uh, we will discuss the needs of Lay Station and kind of. Uh, the current status of that station. Uh, and then finally, I am meeting with Rotary on Thursday. Uh, if you're not aware, Rotary. Uh, just to the newer council members, I, but I think you probably are aware. Rotary every year does a grant and they work with the city to do some project. And over many years, they helped to replace all of the wooden picnic tables over at Greenhorn with cement. Uh, which is fabulous because obviously when we water the lawn or when you get rain, there was just a lot of issues with those wooden um, tables. Tammy, who is doing all that beautiful work on Minor Street, came to us recently and stated that she really felt like some more beautification on. That in the downtown corridor was needed and something that was like kind of a low-hanging fruit item were the garbage cans. And so. If you go out to Deer Creek and the bathroom that we have out there and you look at the garbage cans, they're these really beautiful black metal. And so we are working with Rotary. They have already, from an email that I got today, kind of allocated four thousand dollars. To work on this garbage can beautification project in the downtown area of Warricka. So we're very excited. And they have some other ideas, so I'll be bringing those ideas back to uh, city council. But we'll continue that trend of working with. Warricka Rotary as they invest in um, just these really nice. extra additions to the city, so that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. All right. I'll go to council members. Who wants to go first? You want to go first? Councilman McCoy.
I had a lovely time the last couple of weekends with, um, Councilman K, can I say that, Councilman K? Yeah, I had walked the homeless camps alone, some of them, but I hadn't been out there a lot. We had a good time walking homeless camps. Um, we got to see lots of things that I don't need to, we don't need to share now, but we'll share it later with rest of council and, and Mr. Ledbetter and Public Works and that sort of thing. Um, so, um, I did, I, I, you know, I, with that being said, um, I, I'm gonna take issue with a few things that were said tonight, I know I shouldn't do this, but we were said that the council is responsible for the homeless and we are not actually responsible for the homeless. Actually, probably where the homeless started was when Ronald Reagan was governor of this state, and I'm not picking on him or anybody else, they continued later. Um, we can blame the welfare state on whoever we want, but we all take advantage of the welfare state now, probably anybody that's over sixty-two. And the welfare state started under Franklin D Roosevelt, nineteen thirty-five. And then the money became the Old Age and Infirmed Act and started flowing out in nineteen forty. Uh, Dwight D, it was a ten-year program. It was supposed to end Dwight D Eisenhower and his party knew that if they voted for it, he would lose the presidency in his, in his reelection and the Republicans at that point would lose the majority. Um, that's straight from his words, I was reading his autobiography. I mean, his biography, so, so yeah, I mean, uh, whether we agree with it or not, I know my grandfather said, I don't need social security, I don't need to take government money, we got a lot of people that do. So, you know, let's, if we're gonna, we gotta get our facts straight, if we're gonna talk about where things start. Uh, you know, I mean, we need to be honest with ourselves. Um, Dwayne and I had great talk with the homeless. Um, we talked with everybody this week out on the, on the Greenway. Um, the one thing we talked a lot about were seeing if they had gotten their shots at the last clinic. And then we talked about getting shots for the dogs. There are some people that are averse to getting shots for the dogs. We did explain to them, however, that they can get the shots and do, they can do volunteer work for the city. That the city is gonna do that. And so hopefully we'll get, we'll get a few people to come in out of that. We also reminded them that if your dog is not spayed or neutered, it's gonna cost you more, a lot more. So, um, um, anyway, but it was, it was, it was good to be out there and talking, it was actually, I won't say who, somebody out there cleaning up the creek right where the, the bridge has broken away and everything and he doing a good job, we chatted for him, to him for a while. Um, the only thing that I noticed, and I think, uh, YPD and Sergeant Bueker are doing a great job. But I noticed as I walked the hill two weeks ago, is that we have way too many campgrounds that are close to the top. And we have way too many that are close to the fire breaks, in my opinion. Again, I'm not, you know, I don't report every week to you and let you know how things are going, because I, I don't have the time to get out there every week, so. But, you know, it's just something to think about, um. And, um, uh, it was nice to see that Officer, uh, Bueker was, uh, working with the, the little hidey holes that people are in, because that, uh, is critical infrastructure out there near our, uh, near our Greenhorn Lake. So I counted eighteen camps on the hill two weeks ago, much less than I thought I would count. And, um, and I think we counted probably more than we thought we were gonna get on the Greenway, but it wasn't as many as it could have been. Um, I, 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 uh, am so happy that he brought the Greenway, the bridge that goes under the Greenway on the freeway there, because I can remember six years ago, coming on this council, when it was graffitiing exactly like it is now and saying to the city manager at that time, hey, let's see if we can work with Caltrans, there's somebody to paint it. So, um, you know, again, a- as, uh, Dwayne and I, uh, sorry, Mr. Keg, as we chatted with each of the people that we could and talked about their animals and their health and weather and, and what's going on with the, um, base camp and those sorts of things, for the most part, we got very positive comments. Not about what we're doing, but comments that I think makes me feel that we have, we have a good number of people that will say, I want to take advantage of it. And thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy. Council on Debs.
The mission that I am on doesn't meet until next Tuesday. And so I, uh, really don't have anything report about that, but I, Chief Lemus, I believe we got a burner. Is that correct? Yes, and I believe we all got a picture of that in the email, uh, that is really a wonderful, uh, piece of equipment. Be able to work here in town and not be quite as smoky as it does in the fall. So, uh, Chief, we want you to put that baby to work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Baker.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a number of things. Uh, first of all, um, the Call Your Interpretive Information Center, C two C, um, is meeting, um, on the twenty-eighth of this month in Waireka. Um, and I sit on that, and there's some exciting possibilities for some funding of, uh, some of some programs that would benefit tourism, um, in Siskiyou County. Um, so we'll be hearing more about that. Um, I really would love to go on a tour of Crossroads and of the Greenway and Fall Creek when we're able to get up to that area. I would also reiterate, uh, my desire to have a policy on, uh, fees for events. Um, and I know that we've been talking about that, but I'm just gonna reiterate it for the record. Um, and then also, uh, with budget coming up, um, and I don't know the appropriate way to bring this up, but I, so I'll just, uh, throw it out there for everybody. I really would like to have some type of discussion about making funds available for SNP, for Angels Rescue Ranch, um, those organizations that work with, with animals here, feral animals and animals who needs home, homes. And, um, finally, um, I, uh, Mr. Ledbetter would request, um, a report from the affected department heads on the plan to enforce our fireworks ordinance since the Fourth of July is coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, noted.
Thank you. All right, Councilman K.
Awesome, thank you, and, and thank you, Mr. McCoy, for the, uh, time we got to, to share together and doing a little walkabout on two different occasions. Um, it is enlightening and, and actually, I, I'm, I will say that I thought there would be, um, a little bit more on the hill, um, but there is definitely, honestly, there was more than I and definitely anticipated on the Greenway between Oberlin, Oberlin and the, uh, old Forest Service or Forest Service Building there. There's actually a lot of homeless activity there. Um, a lot of positive, uh, feedback from actually, um, the homeless individuals on, on Bueker, Sergeant Bueker, that, um, it was very positive. One individual said that, um, she got cited, but was very, um, but was very happy with the way that, um, Mr. Sergeant Bueker handled the situation and did a very good job and that he did his due diligence and did the right thing, so, um, it was good, it was actually a very positive, um, uh, encounter that he, that she had, so thank you, and, and yes. And Sergeant Bueker is doing a great job, boots on the ground, getting up there on the hill, on the Greenway, he's doing an awesome job. I mean, I think he's top-notch, he communicates properly with the individuals. Um, he's just doing a really good job all the way around on doing that job and making sure that the individuals are getting the proper attention, that we're not getting out of control on these campsites, um, the proper regulation. And, but yet building some type of, uh, um, of, what do I say, um, communications with them on trying to get connections with services and stuff too, so he's, he's doing a great job. Um, speaking of communications, um, there's a newsletter out too that the COC does have, it's called The Bridge. And I'd like to, I'm not gonna read this, but I would like to send it out to the rest of the council. And I'll, next time on the next meeting, I'll read what the, what this is all about. But it's set, just has some stuff that some homeless individuals write about, what services are going on, what things are happening on, um, like the showers and whatnot, but it also actually has a little thing in here talking about, um, one of the situations that the homeless individuals are going through. So it was kind of enlight- enlightening to hear what they're, you know, going through too. We can stand back and, and, you know, judge what we can, but, you know, till you walk a mile, and that's what this was. One of the things was about walking a mile in their, in their shoes, you don't understand. I, I have a lot better understanding just from previous, um, from what I used to think in conjunction to what I think now from Mike, the individual that, you know, has been working out my shop and he's, he's enlightened me on a lot of different things on what the homeless individuals go through and and on, on a daily basis. But anyways, the other thing we also, I just had a meeting today, um, on our point in time count. We set a date, which is on, um, Tuesday, the twenty-first of January. That's when this, the night of the, the point in time count starts. So that was set, there actually is, um, going to be a new coordinator. Um, a paid position for a PIT coordinator now instead of a volunteer, like I got to do this last year, so that's a blessing for me, I'll tell you, because someone else can actually, um, handle it and have the time to do it and not have to work on it on the spare time like I had to and, and what Madeline had to, is she's putting in a lot of time, so. Um, we'll start next time on the actual surveys. Um, and let's see, what else I want to go over, I mean, there's some other things on homelessness, I, I agree that, um, there's things that need to be some definite improvement on how we handle homelessness on, we can go, um, citizens, what citizens say and, and what we can legally do, and we need to find, uh, a proper structure, and that's what we're gonna be doing as this council, finding that proper structure of what's legal and helping these individuals get services that they definitely need. And what Mr. McCoy says, uh, and talking about the Reagan administration, um, I actually have a little story behind that. Couple of years ago, or not less, probably less than that, I had an individual come into my shop and looking for countertops and to have a discussion on that. And this individual, uh, we got to talking about homelessness, what was going on in this city and what we were doing and and this, uh, this gal was really impressed of what we're trying to, trying to get accomplished in the city. And she started talking about, oh, yeah, she, she knew about the whole problem that started up during the Reagan administration. And I go, it's funny that you know that, because I go, I've been, I've researched that and tracked a lot of it back to that and stuff. And she goes, well, it's not that I, um, heard about it, she goes, I lived it. She goes, I was a social worker, worker down in the Bay Area when that all took place, when they shut down all the, the mental institutions and stuff. She goes, I lived that, she goes, there was thousands of people that were displaced back in the day that had no place to go, there was no game plan on where these individuals could go, and that was definitely a huge creation of where we're at today, so. Um, it was interesting that I'd actually had somebody in my shop that knew firsthand about that, so, you know, circumstances and stuff. Um, another thing is us as a council, I just want some clarification on communication. I, I wasn't trying to isolate anybody on the communication that was, was talking about earlier. I just think as us as, as a council, as city staff and everything, we do need to figure out what this whole thing on events, how it's structured, how things are going, because we start okaying this, we okay that, and there's, we really don't have any, um, so, some real good structure on this. What that means, I don't know, um, I think that's just gonna be a lot of discussion with us as a council. And, but we need to have that, that discussion, there needs to be that, um, communication with all of us, with staff, with us as council and getting that fixed. Because there's, um, we shouldn't have any of these issues that we're having. And we just need to figure out that, what that means. Maybe I'm too old school and we, we did a lot of back in, back in the day where a lot of this was okay, that was okayed and, and probably shouldn't have been, maybe, you know, probably back in the day, but we need to figure out that structure. Um, I'm obviously the type of person that likes lots of functions, because I was on the chamber for so many years and I like to see lots of functions going on, so. You'll always hear me kind of go and leaning towards the function just because that's who I am. Sorry if it offends anybody, I wasn't meant to offend anybody, I'm just wanting to see, um, lots of events, so, sorry about that. Um, I think that's pretty much it, I'll let everybody go on their way, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilman K. All right, so, um, kind of piggyback on a couple of the council members and their comments and, um, whatnot, is I did, um, I know Mrs. Fraser real well at SNP and, um, I ran into her and she did say they administered over thirty, um, Parvo shots, and I think she said probably ten rabies shots to the unhoused populations, and people might say, oh, I have to pay for mine, yeah, I have to pay for mine, but you know what? Um, I'm thankful they gave the Parvo shots, people don't realize how deadly Parvo is. And I would think the citizens that question it, like why they get that Parvo shot, should be thankful because it's a simple step at the park. It's on their shoes, they go home to a puppy, Nancy Chagre, because she raises dogs, she knows. They can, it can be on their shoes and their puppy gets it, so, um, I want to applaud them for giving the, um, shots and the, uh, unhoused citizens, um, allowing their dogs to get the shots and want to care for their, um, fur babies, so, um, but yeah, that's out of cost of, you know, their pocket, probably around just calculation thirteen hundred dollars is what they spent out of their pocket that day to, um, provide those shots, thirty dollars per shot, she said. Um, and so thankful for that organization and all they do, and sometimes they go and, uh, SNP goes unrecognized and a lot of the other shelters get a little more, um, you know, I'm not, because they all do great, I don't, so I don't want that to, anybody take my words wrong, but sometimes they go unnoticed a little bit and some of the other organizations get some good funding, so, um, I want to thank her for going up and participating in that. Um, yes, I've been getting, um, that campus drive is, looks a lot better. Um, so thankful, I'm, uh, thankful for that and thank, um, everybody for the staff and, uh, Sergeant Bueker, um, Chief Gilman, everybody involved, Jason, Sir Ledbetter, everybody involved on getting that cleaned up, I know it was a long wait just because of the weather it was against us, because that ground was so wet, and I know people were frustrated, but I explained to them all the time that we could not get up there and that they get out of hand, I hope we have control of the situation and it doesn't get like that again, so, um, thank you, everybody, for that. Um, you know, as far as, it's, it's a learning experience, um, with the events, I think the events, um, as far as the application goes, I don't think any of that has changed as far as the rules and the questions and what you're going to have at the events. What has changed is I think something, you know, the fee, correct me wrong, has always been there, but it hasn't, and our attorney just discovered that, and it comes with sometimes change is upsetting to people, whether it be good or for the bad. This is a bad, of course, because it is a fee that comes of, um, to the event, and it sounds like it's always been in place but was never enforced, and that's when, you know, we have a new legal team that discovered this. And I think it's probably getting the message out that there, you know, that's why I kind of said, yeah, we might be lenient this year, but maybe next year, there's gonna be a new policy where that's going to be the standard, but our citizens just have to know that, it's kind of a surprise to them now. But I think, you know, moving forward, when it's in place, they know exactly what it is, just like someone coming in, you know, having a building permit, they know exactly what that's going to cost them, and I think that's what our staff is working towards, and so there's been some growing pains and learning experience, but, um, we just learn and move forward and, uh, you know, I want events as well, I want to go smoothly. And I think our staff works towards that, but it's working together with everybody, including us, to make that happen. So, um, I did get to go down, um, real quick and. I did get to go down um real quick in person and see the burner, and it was amazing. Um, it wasn't what I was expecting, you know, anything. I didn't you know, I know it was on its way, and I heard it was there, and the trainer happened to be there. So I got to see firsthand of a lot of the branches, dumps they removed from Greenhorn, and instead of just being in a big pile, they're able to transport it down to the city yard and get rid of it right away. So that's um, it was great. And so that was um very cool to see. So a lot of great things happening. Um, I don't want people to get discouraged that are bringing our events. We want to work with them. Um, there's great energy in the city of Wairika. Um. For events coming downtown, um, I think this council has worked on making it happen. There's good things coming. We have citizens wanting to bring things back or, you know, bring things forward. That's been denied. Or, you know, that it happened ten years ago, or this was forever ago, it can't be done again, but they're wanting to come forward. So I'm happy to see that. So it's just about keeping you know, the positive energy going, I think, from here to our citizens and to the staff. But I think our staff works very hard. And I think, you know, they're learning as well. And I know they have not been treated very well from several citizens um when they're told something that they don't like. And so that's you know, bothers them to me that a citizen can treat our staff poorly when they're doing their job, and it's just a policy. So um yeah, so I will say that, that it just takes, you know, we're all trying out here to, for a better Wairika, and I want to continue that. I want all of us to continue that. And um with that, I will adjourn the meeting and wish everybody a good evening, and thank you for coming. Meeting adjourned.